This is the agenda of the regular board meeting. President and Board of Trustees, Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois. Day is November twenty-second, seven p.m. At this time, we'll try to take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
I'm here.
Trustee Hodges?
Here.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson? Trustee Claybrook?
Thank you, former president, so we stand for the President of the League. And who will lead us, Trustee Garcia?
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any approval or corrections of the minutes of the regular board meeting that was held on November the tenth? Twenty twenty-two? Any correction to be made to the minutes? If there are no corrections to be made to the minutes from November the tenth, I will ask for motion to approve those minutes, please.
Our motion to approve the minutes last week.
There's a motion approved by Trustee Hodges to approve the minutes from November the tenth. Could we have a second, please?
Second.
The second by Trustee Garcia, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Motion passed, minutes approved, thank you. Before we open the meeting up to the public, if you have anything to state to the board, if you would just give us your name and your reason for addressing the board. And to make your statement, and please let me show a comment to three minutes. I'll ask for motion to open the meeting to the public.
I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
There's a motion approved by Trustee Cap to open the meeting to the public. Can we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
The second by Trustee Hodges, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
The meeting is now open to the public for any public comments. And please let me show comments to three minutes. If there are any public comments, I will ask for motion.
Yes, I'm John Hydu. Every month, our, with our water bills, we get a letter from you, Mr. Polk, saying that we should work together. And if you see something, say something. And for the better part of the last two, three years, God knows I've tried to. I tried to call you guys. None, nobody up here. I'm still working on Trustee Hodges here, and nobody else up here will ever return a call. Trustee Garcia in particular, there's only two trustees I ran into on Election Day. I had to go out there just to try to communicate with you guys. Not to complain, just to talk. I walked up to Garcia on Election Day. I asked her to get, video girl had her on camera. She wouldn't say a word, she closed her mouth. So what she could have said is, I've been a trustee for eight or nine years. I've got thousands of dollars of easy money doing next to nothing as a trustee. She could have also said, I'd like to continue to do that. By the way, if you have gotten down one hundred and thirty-eighth place, you see a parking lot across the street from my house? Two new sidewalks, new curb in front of my house, and also a new concrete porch? There's nothing to see here. Keep on walking. I only hope the village would install two new railings, because I believe it's code on my new porch. That's what she could have said. She could have also said just hi to the camera. That's all you had to do. But I have to go out there to talk to her, and I got nothing out of her, just to talk. You kept your mouth closed, and you were hoping that day just to continue to get signatures and to continue getting the free easy money. That's my opinion, that's all we can go by. October eleventh minutes, it states that you congratulated, not congratulated, well, you thanked video girl for coming out and recording to some of the events that Burnham holds. That's great. You're the same person, you wouldn't talk to me at all. You wouldn't say hi, you wouldn't say nothing. Trustee Greer, you used a human shield on Election Day as well, where you just totally ignored me when I was trying to talk to you. I don't get that either. If you'd like to comment on that after I speak, that'd be fine, but I'm just trying to communicate with you as all. Also, I was wondering, you came along with Richardson and Polk to my house two or three months ago. What did you guys want? Saturday afternoon, four or five o'clock, you guys came to my house. I talked for a little bit with you guys, you said you'd get back to me. I'm still waiting for a response from you. I'm just wondering what's going on. Let's see. Trustee Hodges, I did ask you last time I talked to you about the checkbook balance for Burnham. Nobody up here ever wants to talk about our finances. Why is that? I'm just thinking to myself, twenty thirteen, since twenty thirteen, when our clerk got arrested by the feds, we have more financial questions in this village, because you guys won't talk to us. Only because you won't talk to us. We don't, you won't tell us nothing. That's all I'm asking for, is just communication. You guys deny stuff, you guys evade me, you evade everybody. You look at me, Mr. Polk, like that.
Your time is up. Your time is up, thank you.
Actually, I have one last thing to say, sir.
Your time is up, thank you.
We have you, Trustee Cap.
Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Your time is up.
I have public comment. I didn't do my stopwatch at the same time that you did cut him short by fifteen seconds. I find it interesting to-
State your name, can you please state your name, please, for the record?
Just state your name.
Gerald Hunter. I do find it, I like that time back, I do find it interesting that, you know, Burnham wasn't dead and, you know, we were unable to pay our bills. I assume it was hard to purchase anything, but all of a sudden, J.J. Newell's out of business, Scrap Metal Services is out of business, the largest companies in Burnham are out of business. But Burnham has lots of money. And, you know, we're purchasing things, and I don't even have to go and tell you what we're purchasing, but I just find it so strange. Where does that money come? Does it come from the county? Does it come from the state? I mean, I'm no accountant, you know, I haven't been to ask to see any kind of Florida reports to see where that money's coming from, but I find it crazy that you can spend money like a Polish priest. Just spend, spend, spend. And it just, it behooves me that that can happen. And is it, you know, is it that our water rates, that I was trying to explain early on, when you tried to raise them, when you tried to triple them, and then you had to go back and change it again? When I was saying, hey, they're gouging, man, they're gouging their water rates, they're gouging their water rates so they can have slush funds to spend. And I believe that is still the case. You know, as soon as I find myself getting around to looking at some of the reports, you know, I'll verify it. And number two, I think all you as trustees ought to go to Hoxie Avenue. You ought to drive down one hundred and forty-third, and you ought to look at the company that's doing business there. And you ought to go to the Company Recorder Deeds and look up the property. And that place has turned into a junkyard. They're polluting the land that used to be cut perfect by the village, all the way back. And now it's not. It's continually grown up. Well, they've taken it upon themselves to bring equipment in there. I drove there earlier, and they were freaking out because I started just watching what they were doing. They're clearing all the land, bringing more cars in there. I don't know if they're planning on moving them off the street, but I'd have to imagine the residents around there aren't real happy with that. And I'm not going to get into who owns those lots and how they're tax exempt, whether they're vacant land, what they are, whether they're going to change. So the gentleman, I just can't see how that benefits the village, unless for some reason you're getting your cars fixed for nothing. Or, you know, you're selling them trucks, you know, a pickup truck from the Public Works Department. And I haven't even found out yet if we gave them our plow and our salt spreader. That was not on the agenda, whether that was being sold for twenty-five-hundred dollars. I do believe, I hear you, you cut me off. I do believe that that truck was probably worth more like five or six thousand, not twenty-five-hundred. And if that plow and that salt spreader went with it, probably more like nine thousand dollars, and you gave it to them for twenty-five-hundred dollars.
Is there any other public comments?
Look into it.
Is there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? I'll ask for motion to close the meeting to the public. Thank you for your comments. Make a motion to close.
Make motion to close the meeting to the public?
There's a motion approved by Trustee Garcia to close the meeting to the public. Can we have a second, please?
Second.
The second by Trustee Cap, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. For those who have not been here before, you know, we have repetitious questions, and, you know, the same people come to every meeting, asking the same question, asking the same question, trying to vex us, and, you know, trying to ignore us, and making all kinds of accusations. And this happens all the time, all the time, you know, several meetings, and it's just ongoing, ongoing. So, but I can assure you that the Village of Burnham is making great progress, and I've stated that several times. And whether people believe it or disbelieve it, that's left up to you. But the community is doing okay, and if I tell you that, then you got my word on it.
Can I address the stairs in my house? I mean, as a trustee, I think I have a right, no matter if I'm a trustee or not, right, to make repairs to my house. And I went through the channels, I, you know, applied for the permit, the inspector went out there and did, you know, what he was supposed to do, and I got the permit, and I got the contractors to go and do the work on my own. Nothing to do with the village, once I got the permit, and I'm working on getting the railings, you know, and like everyone else, right? I have, you know, I'm on a budget, but it's going to get done before the permit expires. And that's all I have to say, so it shouldn't be anyone's business, you know, as to what's getting done in front of my house.
If you would talk to me that day, I wouldn't be here tonight.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Before I get caught, kick out.
Thank you, trustee guys.
Mr. Polk, you're in charge of the department. Hold on, listen, you're in charge of the department.
No, your time is up.
And you put self on it. You just said we had it done by a contractor. The permit did not say contract.
No, your time is up.
And you're in charge of the department, and it was done the exact same time all the sidewalk work was done. Why? Why is it done at the same time the village's concrete work was being done? I know why. I know why.
You're disturbing the meeting, I'll have you removed.
Sir.
I gave you three minutes to talk, and that's it.
Showing your authority, Mr. Polk. If you would only just talk to me.
Okay, so in the minutes report, we're asking the resident if you would move all the abandoned cars off the street. There's snow going to be approaching very soon, so we need to try to clean the streets. So any cars that are not working, if you can move them off the street, then we would appreciate that. And also, we hope to offer some type of assistance to the seniors. We hope to offer some type of assistance to the seniors that share with the snow remover, handicapped people who might need some help, so. And also, we're going to have an event for property fraud. There are people who have stolen people's houses. It's not, it's not too many, but we don't want any head endations, so we'll be having that set up. Put us on, and we'll get back with you and let you know when that's going to be. That's all I have. At this time, we are here reporting, but she's a thief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a reminder that the clerk's office will be closed. Good day for Thanksgiving, and we will be open the following day from nine to twelve. Um, and I apologize for the disruption.
That's herself on us, so she don't have to pay people on money, and she hires contractors.
Sir, you're disturbing the meeting, sir, you're disturbing the meeting.
Mr. Polk, the Lord is watching you.
And no one is talking to you.
He's talking to you.
Perhaps he should be.
Okay, so clerk.
You guys hide my religion.
That's all you have, clerk. And a trustee Greer, a public education.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Illinois Housing Development Authority announced its reopening a mortgage assistance program. It's designed to assist homeowners financially impacted by the pandemic. On Tuesday, November the first, twenty twenty-two, the Illinois Homeowners Assistance Fund will provide up to thirty thousand dollars in mortgage assistance to eligible homeowners. The money will be paid directly to the mortgage company. Whether the, you could have a homeowner, you could have a mortgage, a reverse, a reverse mortgage, or a mortgage, or you could be able to have a mortgage-free program. The fund that passed through housing payments will pay up again to three months of, up to three months of mortgage payments. The program is a free fund program, you do not have to pay the money back. Applications and program information and updates can be found at illinoishousinghelp.org. Applications will be accepted for this mortgage program from now up until eleven fifty-nine p.m. on Tuesday, January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So if you just know if anyone that needs assistance with their mortgage, again, this is a free program, you do not have to pay the money back, they will pay up to three months of your mortgage. And if you'd like some more information or to get the address for that, please see me after the meeting. Fun fact to share around the dinner table. Did you know that the first Thanksgiving was celebrated in sixteen twenty-one? There were, they had a harvest festival, there were fifty programs and fifty Indians. Turkey was not on the menu there for the first Thanksgiving. They had ducks, goose, ostriches, lobsters, fish, and of course, cranberries. Did you know that Abraham Lincoln proclaimed Thanksgiving Day a national holiday on October the third, eighteen sixty-three? Harry Truman is often credited with being the first president to pardon a turkey. There are four towns in the United States that's named Turkey. There's a town in Arizona, Texas, Louisiana, and North Carolina. The average number of calories that a one consumer Thanksgiving Day is four thousand and five hundred.
Wow.
The Butterball Company hotline answer more than one hundred thousand turkey cooking questions. It is a tradition to watch football on Thanksgiving Day. More than fifty-four million Americans are expected to travel during the Thanksgiving holiday. So again, I have to tell everyone, for you and your family, have a great holiday. We are truly blessed as a people and as a community. Burnham is a good community, and as the mayor said, we're moving forward, and you got our word on it. Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Thank you very much, trustee Greer, for that report information. Republic Works and Building says trustee Claybrook is not here. Trustee Cap, will you take that, please?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on contracting a company to assist the Public Works Department during the winter season, not to exceed twenty-five dollars an hour. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the right to hire a contractor to assist public works during the winter season, not to exceed twenty-four dollars an hour.
If I could have discussed it a little bit, that's just in the event if we get a lot of snow, and we're bringing in some new employees, you know, who will not be exactly real experienced at it. So we just want an extra hand to, you know, to help us to keep the village moving, you know, so peoples can get to work and get home in a safe manner. So we just want the extra backup in the event if we should need it. So there's a motion approved by trustee Cap to approve this under the Public Works Department, not to exceed twenty-four dollars an hour, and they will be private contractor. Could we have a second, please?
I'll second.
The second by trustee Hodges, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. And also, under Public Works, we are finishing up trimming some trees. I don't think they got done today, did they, Dwayne?
No, they didn't.
They get done, so hopefully they'll finish up tomorrow. If not, then they'll come back on Friday, let me get that done. And the residents call up, you know, they're concerned about tree branches hanging over their roofs and that sort of thing with storm winds that come, and they feel that it will damage their property, so they want those addressed. So we get those, those kind of requests all the time, so it's our goal and our job to take care of the need of the people of the Village of Burnham. Excuse me, so, and thank you, trustee Cap, for that. An ordinance resolution and plan, and trustee Garcia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
A discussion of consideration-
Go ahead, wait.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on ordinance number twenty twenty-two O dash zero zero four, revised water rate and late penalty. In ordinance, adjusting the village's water rates, amending chapter ninety-eight, utilities, article one, division three, rates and charge sections ninety-eight dash one sixty-one, rates established in section ninety-eight dash one sixty-one subsection two, late penalty in section eighty-six dash four twenty-four of the revised shore text of the Court of Ordinances, Village of Burnham.
Now, the clerk will explain exactly what this is and what the particulars are in the details.
So the ordinance, this ordinance is to revise the rates to suspend the increase on the water rates. We had suspended it on our own book, we included it now in the ordinance, so it's now, it will be long. And also to address the late fees. Currently, we have late fees that, if they're assessed, they're at a percentage, and this would revise it and put it to a flat five dollars on a late fee, as opposed to a percentage of five percent.
And the percentage would be more, so just a five dollar late fee would be cheaper for the residents. And also, the water rate is being frozen at this point, and at sometime in the near future, well, I don't say near future, but sometime in the future, the water rate will be raised again at some point.
You're saying it's frozen, that means it's not going up right now, right?
Right, that's correct.
It's not going up.
Right.
Right.
Now, at sometime in the future, at sometime, we don't know when, but sometime, we will come back, and the board will raise it a little bit, and keep up with inflation and keep up with costs and keep up with repairs. So, so, okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, trustee Garcia.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash O dash zero zero four, revised water rate and late penalty. In ordinance, adjusting the village's water rates, amending chapter ninety-eight, utilities, article one, division three, rates and charge sections ninety-eight dash one sixty-one, rates established in section ninety-eight dash one sixty-one subsection two, late penalty in section eighty-six dash four twenty-four of the revised shore text of the Court of Ordinances, Village of Burnham.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by trustee Garcia to approve this adjustment.
I'll second it.
Trustee Cap is going to second the motion.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
The motion passed, do you have anything else, trustee Garcia?
Don't do two, three, and four.
Yes, just. She have to agree more.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the new business application by Aries Beauty Bar. The location will be twenty-three oh six State Street.
Would you just stand up and give us a preview of what you're planning to do?
Hi, my name is Ariel. I'm trying to open up a beauty bar, it's basically for women, hair, clothes, needs their lashes, everything for women, basically, one-stop shop.
Does the board have any questions? Does the board have any questions?
Now, you said it's going to be wet again.
I'm going to sell lashes, women clothes, women shoes, everything for women here, whatever you need, one-stop shop.
Oh, what are the hours we should probably bring up? What are the hours?
Probably like ten or six, nothing too late, because you get more clothes.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have a question. What made you go into this business?
At first, I was like, after high school, I worked for the post office for like four years. I'm just like, I gotta do something else, and I always get my hair and my nails done. I like wearing different clothes, so, yeah, it's just something I like, so I'd rather do something I like instead of being out carrying mail.
Social fashion, I like it.
But are you going to be, you're not going to be doing hair?
No.
Okay.
It's like a store.
So it's like a store, like a beauty supply store or boutique?
Basically, but it ain't going to be like Robobands and stuff. I might have a boutique. We'll just be selling everything.
No hair products?
Yeah, like hair weave.
Okay.
But she does have another store, you have, you stated you had another store.
No, Kwanda had the store, but she, she used to have the store before me. She got two of them over there.
Sorry, I missed my step.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then proceed, trustee Garcia.
So make a motion to approve the business application by Aries, is that how you pronounce it, Aries?
Yeah, Aries Beauty Bar.
Aries Beauty Bar, and the location will be twenty-three oh six State Street.
There's a motion approved by trustee Garcia, could we have a second?
I'll second it.
The second by trustee Hodges, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Motion passed, I proceed, trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the new business application by Ortega Auto Repair, and the location is one thirty-nine hundred Torrance Avenue.
Okay, so I assume that's the two gentlemen here, so now one of the issues down there is that cars are parked all over the street, parked over wherever a place they shouldn't be parked. They're parked on the north side of the street. The business on the north side of the street doesn't have anything to do with that business. Now, what about that lot? What about that fence there? Could you open that fence up and put some cars in there? Is that full of cars in that?
Yeah, we could put, it's storage.
Okay.
So we could put-
Is there anything, is there anything inside the fence now?
Inside the fence?
Yes.
Just two junk cars that we have in there for parts, that we use for parts, and an ice truck, that's basically all we have in there.
Well, it'd probably be a good idea if you guys could, I mean, clean the, clean inside the fence out, you could park some of your cars in there, because we just have-
Yeah, we did clean the inside, so we could park more cars inside.
We just have too many cars parked on the, on the street there, and the guys who was there before, sometime the police go through there and say something to them, and they felt they were being harassed, but you're blocking the street. And in the event, if the fire engine has to come through, and that's a nine-one-one emergency, and we cannot access, that's going to be problematic, so.
Right, yeah, I'm fixing that, so that we're not going to have any cars in the way anymore.
And it seemed like, some of the mechanics, it seemed like they collect more cars than they can do anything with. They just bringing cars and bringing cars and bringing cars.
Oh, yeah, I reduced that, so we're not going to have that many cars, just so we could finish that same day.
Okay, now you're about to second a third person, came and said that again otherwise, so.
Is that the old cool heat business?
Right across the street, I'll take it, right across the street. Okay, does the board have any questions?
Is this your first location? Or your only location?
This is our first, only, yeah, yeah. We had moved from the east side, then we came over here to Burnham.
Is there any other question from the board? I proceed, trustee Garcia.
Make a motion to approve the business application by Ortega Auto Repair, and the location is one thirty-nine hundred Torrance Avenue.
Okay, there's a motion approved by trustee Garcia to approve the Ortega Auto Repair. Could we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Cap, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. I proceed, trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the new business application by J.H. Bending LLC. The location will be from his primary residence on one hundred and forty-fourth and Calhoun.
Okay, so does the board have any questions, or must have?
Is he here?
Right here. So what is the J.H. Bending?
Uh, just a vending company that provide vending machines to businesses.
So do you have a number of businesses that you will be?
Uh, they all over. I got like schools, light berries, and, you know, daycare and stuff like that.
That's wonderful. I understand that's a pretty good business.
All right.
So are you providing the vending machines, or?
Yes, I provide the vending machines, and then when I provide the vending machine, they either got an option to service it, or I service it.
And so where do you store the vending machines?
I buy it straight from the warehouse and get it delivered to the business.
So you have the supplies at your house?
Sometimes it's just a sand club trip to the vending machine, you know, ninety percent of the time.
So you don't store the vending machines that travel?
No.
So it's kind of like an office setting, basically?
Yeah.
Now, what about street traffic? Police have virtually affected neighborhood in any way?
No.
So there'll be no, no extra parking, or vehicles like?
No.
Okay, is there any other question from the board? Okay, trustee Garcia.
Make a motion to approve the business application by J.H. Bending, and the location will be from his primary residence on one hundred and forty-fourth and Calhoun.
Okay, there's a motion approved by trustee Garcia to approve the J.H. Bending LLC business operation. Could we have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
The second by trustee Hodges, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Motion passed, and congratulate on all the three new businesses, thank you. And Burnham is free and open to business, as long as it's run in the right manner, and is supportive of the community and stuff, and we are all for that, so, okay. If finally, trustee Cap?
Good evening, everyone, and I have nothing to add tonight.
Thank you, trustee Cap. Public Utilities, trustee Rich, and I, does anybody have anything on Public Utilities? Does anybody have anything on Public Utilities? Okay, Park and Recreation, trustee Hodges.
Oh, probably too, the heat, are they still helping people out with the heat, with their gas and light bill?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's still, that's still available, so you can help your gas and light bill, you can reach out to the heat, they can help you guys out with your gas and light bill, so.
That's on December the tenth, right?
Yeah, I've forgotten that.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. All right, so we can talk about the December tenth. The heat, they'll be there to help people out with the gas and like water bills.
So on December the tenth, we'll have a holiday Vendorama. We're gonna have vendors there that they will be selling items, like little Christmas items or little knickknacks or things that you can buy for Christmas. And we also will be having lighties there who will be taking your applications for your gas and your light bill and your water bill. And we also have the COVID clinic. And you are also for the ones that are getting shots. As of now, if they haven't changed, you will be receiving a hundred dollar gift card for receiving your shot. And they also will be doing rapid COVID testing. Again, the event is on December the tenth from eleven a.m. to five p.m. So we had one in November. It was wonderful. It was great. And so we have another on December the tenth. So please pass the word along and come out. And we have a lot of things going on on that day. And I just also wanted to remind everyone, Thorne Township is having their Christmas tree lighting. That's December the third, six p.m. to eight p.m. At Thorne Township, seven community Christmas trees lighting ceremony. So each of the communities will be having their own Christmas tree. There'd be hot food, hot chocolate, and music, and much more. That's December the third. Tiffany A. Hinyard is the supervisor. And last but not least, if you know of anyone that's disabled and in need of a food basket delivered to their home, please leave your name to be given to me at the front desk there, and I will see that they will receive a basket will be delivered to them. So again, pass the word along. If you know of anyone that's disabled and is in need of a food basket, please let me know. Thank you.
And in addition to that, needy families of Burnham are encouraged to call in. I mean, as they do every year, you know, call in and get on the list. We do try to come up with some type of accommodation for them, for the residents of Burnham.
And this is for the Christmas holidays or?
Yes. Thorne Township did give out five Thanksgiving baskets or dinners to some needy families. So we've compiled a list of people that we knew and submitted that. So they're gonna be picking those up tomorrow. So the goal is, is to try to help everyone who's in need. And that's a part of our job to do that. And so we don't collect money here for free. I mean, we have to work for it. So if anybody that's working with me and we're working together, then I'm always asking people to do different things. So we are working, and I can assure you of that. So. Are there any presentation of petitions?
Oh, pardon my phrase.
Your pardon my phrase.
Uh, yes. Hello, everyone. I wanna thank, I had an open gym on November twelfth. I had a good turnout. I mean, probably around about thirty-five, forty of men there. And we had a good time. I wanna thank publicly Coach Murray, Coach Ryan Murray. He's on the block market over here. He came out and he's having the kids play, learn basketball. We had a couple of kids even doing games, but these ones come out and they have something to do. They had some fun. And I'm gonna do another open gym before the year's over for Christmas break. You know, I'm always pushing for kids to have things to do throughout the year. So at Christmas break, I'm gonna try to do something else at the gym. We may have to do some advanced pop. I'm open for any suggestions for, if anybody wants to bring somebody, like volleyball, anything, jump rope, let me know. We bring a man right now, the most popular thing right now, basketball. But we're gonna try to do another open gym. So but that date will be, I will let you guys know at the next meeting, in the coming weeks for that. Also, I wanna talk more about the toy giveaway. We received some toys, and I thank everyone that's sent in toys. One thing I do ask, and you don't have to, but we'd like for you to leave your name because we like to say thank you to the people know who helped out. So when you drop off your toy here at City Hall, at Village Hall, we'd love for you to leave your name. You don't have to, you can, you can anonymous, that's fine too. But we, I'm just really appreciative of all the people. We're doing a toy drive, and we just wanna make sure, as supplies we have, as many kids as possible, have a good day on that day of Christmas, or Christmas week. We wanna make sure people are taken care of. December seventeenth would actually be giveaway. So it's gonna be over at the community center. We'll have some hot chocolate, some cookies. It's gonna be a good day. So December seventeenth, we actually give away, but up to then, we'll be doing the toy drive here at the village hall. We should, we will have a box out there. You can still drop it off at the front, either at the police station or at the clerk's desk, or the clerk office. But we will have a Christmas box available in the coming weeks. We can drop off gifts at the Christmas box, too. We just wanna make sure people, the kids are taken care of. But like the mayor said, the only way we can do this is that's together, that's Burnham together. Also, I did wanna, I don't know if we publicly talked about it, but I'm really still proud of the work we did together with Trailway over there. Again, we're gonna get started on construction on that next year. That's gonna be a really great project. And after talking to constituents, some of the people of Burnham, they're really excited. And it's gonna be a great day when we open that up, too. So I wanna thank you guys for your time and Burnham together. Appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Hodges, for your report and that information. So we don't have any petition or petitions. Do we have, do we have any communication? Resumations? Do we have any memorials? I think we had one from the day, but I'm not gonna reveal it right now. So I'm gonna save it to the next meeting, but I don't have a hundred percent confirmation. And it appears that it may have been a village official. So I'll be announcing that at the next meeting. So. Unfinished business?
I have one item.
Trustee Cap?
We brought up the changes, reducing the speed limit on both Torrance, Burnham, and State Street, and it is in the works. We have to go through the state. The process has been started. Pictures have been taken. Engineering studies are in the works. So we're not getting up on it, but we have a longer path to go through. So we're still going forward. And they've caught some people recently going very fast. And that's all I have on that right now.
That is a reckless driving shot, which is impoundable.
We've been pounded some recently as well. That's all I have on that item.
Okay, I mean, under new business. Trustee Cap, would you take that?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the temporary hire of Christopher Hodges and Elias Cables for the Public Works Department.
Okay, so we had a little snack food and the agenda for the day. So we will come back on the thirteenth and officialize this. But tonight, then we will go ahead with it, as noted, under new business. So are there any, we have Mr., Mr. Hodges had to go, had to go out of town to pick up his kid from school. So if anyone has any question for him, he's on the phone right now, so you can ask him the question. So if any of the board members have any question for him, then we'll stick him up in line.
I'm gonna put him right, I'm Hodges. He's not, he's not my name. That's real.
Well, that's good.
That's real.
His first name is Chris.
His name is Christopher. My brother actually named his Christopher Hodges. He's odd. I do not. You know, I do not know him for this process. That's on the record, I'm not lying.
Okay, does the board have any question for Mr. Hodges?
Why are you interested in this position?
I mean, the question is, Mr. Hodges, like, why are you interested in this position?
Well, I have a previous, like, fourteen years of maintenance. So I like, I like what I did. I was at CTA for like fourteen years. So I did a multitude of things. I operated the sweep foot, snow flower, the payloader. So I just like to be hands-on. And I like to move around. The current position I'm at right now, I'm pretty much driving, which of course requires you to sit behind the wheel. But I must rather be out and about and being active. It feels like I'm doing a little bit more, or accomplishing a little bit more when I'm out.
Okay, okay.
Any other question from the board?
You don't mind getting your hands dirty? You don't mind getting up early in the midnight hours if you have to?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear the question.
Maybe we might have to repeat it.
Her question was, do you really mind getting up in the wee-wee hours or getting your hands dirty? And, you know, this job could require, the superintendent might call you at three o'clock in the morning and say, we got, we got five inches of snow out here. We need to get it moved. The people will be headed to work in a couple hours. We wanna get the streets clear so the people can get to work and take the kids to school or whatever needs to be done.
No, I don't mind. Because normally I might sleep maybe three or four hours a night. So at that time, a lot of times, I'd be up especially, by me working at CTA, I worked various different schedules. I worked the graveyard shift. I worked seven to three-thirty in the morning. Even the position I have now, I get off at three forty-five in the morning. So, and I definitely don't have any issues getting my hands dirty.
Okay, and the last question I have, are you a team player?
Absolutely. I played sports all through my childhood. I coached my son all the way, you know, through grammar school, high school. So I'm definitely a team player. I raised three kids. Two of them about to be a nurse. My son is about to be a brad assistant at William Penn University in Iowa. And I'm helping raise in three grandbabies now. So I'm definitely a team player.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, if there are no other questions by the board, then we would, I tell you, we just do this together. And I'll have Mr. Cap to stand up and just tell us, and we can ask him whatever question. You don't have to stand, you know, so.
Hello, board. My name is Elias Cables.
You're capable, so you can ask him whatever questions you may have him as well. Then we'll, then we'll take both of them together. Does the board have any questions? Does the board have any questions? Okay. If there's no questions, then we.
I'm just curious, how did you find out about the position here?
No, that, no, I'm sorry, we done with you.
Curious how you found out about the position.
Oh, indeed.
The only question I would have is if you would be available, because you know, snow is real. I'm in the middle of the night, we may need to help sometime, different times.
I did, I did a water restoration for a service monster for five years. And that's twenty-four seven.
And the same question I would like to ask Mr. Gentlemen, are you a team player?
I am.
Are you willing to get your hands dirty? And get out there and work with your superintendent?
Okay, will be another question? Proceed, trustee Cap.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the temporary hire of Christopher Hodges and Elias Cables for the Public Works Department.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by trustee Cap to approve these two appointees for the Public Works Department. Could we have a second, please?
A second.